Good afternoon and welcome to the Grand Rapids Community College Board of Trustees Meeting for Monday, October 20, 2025. Trustee Williams was with us in our work session, and he will be joining us soon. I am Kathleen Brinesma. I'm the Vice Chair of the Board. I am in the chair today because Dr. Love Lady Mitchell was called away for work, so I am going to try to fill her shoes. I'm going to do my best. Do any board members or Dr. Treisenberg have guests in the audience that they would like to introduce? Seeing none? Welcome. First order of business today is the approval of the agenda. Trustees, this is the time to remove any item from the consent agenda for separate consideration if necessary. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Seeing none, may I have a motion for approval of today's agenda? Any discussion? All those in favor of adopting today's agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now it's time for open comments. We will open the meeting up to public comment. Anyone in the audience who would like to address the board can do so at this time. Please note that the board will not respond to your comments at this time, and they must be specifically related to today's agenda. Any public comments? Okay. Seeing none. Special order of business today. We are going to begin with our annual audit report. John Globocker, our Vice President of Finance and Administration, will come to the podium to introduce Brian from Plant Moran. Hi.
Good afternoon, members of the board. It's my pleasure to introduce Brian Greco, our partner and partner at Plant Moran. But I also wanted to share a few moments of gratitude to all those that are involved in the annual audit, beginning with Todd Hurley and Nat Lloyd and their leadership. But the annual audit goes well beyond accounting and budget services. Here are those entities or those departments across the campus that play a role. So involved in the annual audit are work papers as well as testing of information. So I think it warrants me reading aloud the list. Information technology, mentioning accounting and budget, human resources, payroll, student financial services, financial aid, workforce training, registrar, institutional research, grants, School of Health and Sciences, and communications and foundation. Apologize for the repetitive sciences there. So it goes to show that it takes an entire college to pull forward an audit. And so it's my pleasure to introduce Brian Greco from Plant Moran, who will speak to the audit itself.
Thank you, John.
While the slide deck gets posted on the screen here, I just would like to reiterate the thank you and appreciation that we've had with the communications and the transparency as part of the audit process. There is a lot that goes into it. It does get boiled down to, for this meeting, a few slides and a slide deck, and then also the full set of financial statements and reports. But there's an awful lot of work that does go into that. I'm going to move this back a couple of slides. There's an awful lot of work that goes into this, and we certainly appreciate all of the communication transparency that management has shown throughout this audit process. So I appreciate the opportunity to spend just a few minutes covering the audit process at a pretty high level, but if there are questions, you know, feel free to ask those, and I can address those as I can. You'll see on the screen here what I plan to cover is the audited financial statements, some of the key highlights, financial information. We do issue a report over internal controls. I'll cover that briefly as well, as well as our required communications, and then a quick update on the federal awards or single audit. The most important part I wanted to point on this slide is we did issue a clean, unmodified opinion over the college's financial statements. So that is the highest level of assurance that we can issue, and it's a very important piece of information as part of that audit process that we did issue a clean, unmodified opinion. Next slide takes a look at the assets and deferred outflows of the college. You can see the totals there on the bottom, about a $35 million increase over last year. So just shy of $384 million total last year, up to just over $419 million this year. The increase is really in three specific areas. College saw a nice increase in its long-term investment portfolio over last year. The MIPSers Plan, which is the state retirement plan that the college is a part of, the multi-employer plan. The health retirement or OPEB piece of that did transition to an asset this year. So there was a significant increase in that plan. That's primarily driven through the actuary report that is derived by the State Office of Retirement Services. Primarily, the return on the investments as part of that portfolio is what's driving that, along with some of the other actuarial calculations. That does get pushed down to the college, so you get your piece of the pie related to that, and that did see an increase over last year. And then the last piece is capital projects. So some of those capital projects were completed during the year. The screen does show a comparison as a portfolio of your assets year over year, and you can see some of those changes over last year. So an increase in that long-term investment portfolio, and also that MIPSers OPEB plan as well. Liabilities and deferred inflows, about a $21 million decrease over last year. That's almost entirely derived of the other component of MIPSers, which is the pension plan. So there's a health retirement plan. There's also a pension plan as part of MIPSers. That is a significant liability of the college. That saw a pretty significant decrease in liability over last year. So again, state does its work around the actuarial calculation. Some of the return on those investments as part of that portfolio is what's driving some of that change. But that's almost entirely what contributed to the change in decrease in long-term liabilities over last year. And you can see that reflected on the screen with the kind of breakout of liabilities and deferred inflows. You can see the portion of the net pension liabilities down, which changes some of the other liability categories from last year to this year. The other piece we look at is the revenues, expenses, and change in net position year over year. So that top piece there, the top bar, is your operating revenues. That's primarily your tuition and fees, and your federal grants and contracts. Looks like it was flat over last year. One thing I want to point out, that try not to go too far into the accounting weeds, is there was a change in how your tuition and fee scholarship gets allocated. NUCUBO put out some new guidance that was filed this year. That translated into a shift of where some of those dollars went. About $6 million that was previously resided in your expenses was pushed up into tuition and fees to net that down further. So if it was apples to apples, the operating revenues would have been up about $6 million. The corresponding increase would be to your expenses. So if you were to add that $6 million to expenses, those would be primarily flat year over year, which would be an expectation. You would have saw a nice increase in your tuition and fee category, but for this change to how those get allocated. You know, going forward, those will be more of an apples-to-apples comparison, but did want to point that out. The other red bar up there is your non-operating revenues. That increases primarily around your Pell revenue. So students that receive Pell grants did increase over last year by about $6 million. Minimal other activity and overall, your change in net position was about $56 million over last year. Couple of our required communications. So our scope of our audit was completed as planned. No issues were identified that changed the scope of our audit. As I had mentioned, complete cooperation was given throughout the audit process, and we certainly appreciate the transparency that management has as part of this process as well. Two immaterial adjustments that were passed on related to when adopting a new accounting standard went into effect, and some fiduciary activities that are very limited in nature that have been recurring year over year. No findings to report as part of our internal controls assessment. And then there will be one new accounting pronouncement adopted next year. How the face of your statements is going to change how it looks a little bit. There's going to be some geography of numbers moving. Not going to change your numbers. They'll just be how they appear on the face of the statements, and we'll work closely with management on implementing that. Then finally, a couple of comments on the federal awards or single audit. So these are the federal grants and contracts that you receive. Just about $44 million were received during fiscal year '25. There's two major programs that we tested this year. Student Financial Aid, which is fairly consistent year over year, then also the Michigan Reconnect Grant of about $3.6 million. We tested that as part of our process as well. No findings to date. Once our government does issue the compliance supplement, we'll go ahead and get this wrapped up speedily after that gets completed. So with that, I'd be happy to address if there's any questions, comments, or concerns.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions or discussion on the audit report? All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to accept the annual audit as presented? Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the annual audit report as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now it's time to approve the consent items. May I have a motion to approve those items as presented? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to purchases over $100,000. Trustees, may I have a motion to approve the purchases over $100,000 as presented in today's agenda? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Capital Outlay. Vicky Genoia, our Executive Director of Operational Planning, welcome to the podium.
Good afternoon, board members. President, Amy. Nice to be here again. It's my pleasure this afternoon to bring the updated capital outlay plan to you for your approval. We do this every October. Just a little bit of a reminder again of how the process works. Every year, Michigan universities and community colleges are required to participate in the capital outlay budget development process in preparation for an executive budget recommendation. This particular submission is for the state's 2027 fiscal year. There are two parts to the process. One is required and one is voluntary. The narrative that you received is the required story. This is something that we update annually, and I feel badly, John, because I didn't include a slide with everyone's names of the number of people that participate in preparing this. It truly is a many hands make light work kind of project, and it's really a snapshot in time annually of what I refer to as our why, what, who, where, and how story. The why starts with the strategic plan, the mission, our history. The what is a very broad overview of all the things we do. All the new activities that are happening in all of the schools, student services, student supports, K-12 partnerships, academic outreach activities, workforce development programs, economic development. It's what's happening and trending now that we're working on and for the future. The third section is the who. That's the data. What do our enrollment trends look like? What have they been? What are we projecting in the future? And then the fourth and fifth sections are the where and the how. It's all about our buildings, our capital assets. So it's a very comprehensive list of all of our facilities, the square footage in those spaces, how they're used currently. We highlight the progress we've made. So this year, the plan talks about the new rec center and that renovation there, but it also challenges us to talk about where our buildings might be restricting our ability for our growth and the programs and the things that we want to do. And it's where we start to make the case for the second part of the capital outlay process, which is the voluntary submission, meaning an actual request for state consideration for cost share. We're not submitting anything this year. As you all know, we're well into the renovation of the LRC project. But this document does require your approval annually, which is why I'm here again to ask for that this year.
Thank you, Vicky. Are there any questions or discussion about the annual capital outlay?
Need a motion?
I want questions and discussion first, if I may. I want to say thank you. This annual report for me is similar to the local strategic value report in that it gives me an annual summary of everything, not everything, a lot of the things that are going on on this campus. And it's a document of beauty, and I'm very proud of it, and thank you, everybody, for doing the work and for helping put it together.
Human resources, and facilities, and academic and student affairs, and many hands. So thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the capital outlay plan as presented? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Vicky.
Great work.
Dr. Treisenberg, President's Report.
Thank you for this opportunity. Next slide, please. We're now just over halfway through the fall semester. For many of our students, that represents a 15-week semester, and they're done with their midterm projects and exams. We have others, programs of study that are divided into seven-week classes, and so they're now getting into that second seven weeks. And we have a number of our students and scholars who are on a non-traditional schedule, and they're operating according to those. But for faculty, students, and staff, there's a lot of activity, a lot of buzz on campus. It's a great place to be this time of year. Next slide, please. The college is really pleased to have been able to engage with the public and the life of the community, because we are a community college. In particular, I'll call out the college's participation with Art Prize and with Tech Week. For both of those events, we were among the many venues for activity. Many of our faculty and staff and students participated in both of these community-wide events, and the participation of GRCC in both of these has been really appreciated by the leadership of these events. So I applaud our people who have made our participation in this possible. It's a great connection to our community. We celebrated Homecoming recently. Lots of energy and activities surrounding that, a number of events, including those put on by the student government and the Campus Activities Board. We'll hear a little more about that later. Athletic events and community-building events and spirit events like wearing tie dye or GRCC apparel and the like. We also took the time to vote on one of the three mascot options that were presented, the fox, the lion, or the river otter. The tallies of that will not be revealed in this meeting, but will be revealed in January, once we've built the full story to support the mascot that is chosen. So more on that at the start of the new year.
Are the votes in, though?
The votes have been, the votes are in. Polls are closed.
Locked in a case somewhere.
Yes, and I won't tell you where. We're also really pleased to note a number of recognitions for the quality of our programs and the leadership that GRCC continues to exert at both the state and national level. Our Water to Work Program, which is led by Dean John Van Elst and Haley Cozal, recently received an award as the Exemplary Credit Program from the National Council of Workforce Education. So the trophy that you see, the plaque you see them showing there, was presented at a conference in Washington, D.C. just a couple of weeks ago. And also, a couple of weeks ago, we joined with our colleagues at GVSU and Ferris State University and with the Grand Rapids Promise Zone to celebrate the extension of the Promise Zone promise to not only GRCC, but to our four-year colleagues. The Promise Zone now offers students who graduate with an associate's degree from GRCC to extend their studies with Promise Zone support during their bachelor, baccalaureate work at GVSU or Ferris, with those institutions also providing some additional financial support for those students. So that's a great way for our students to walk in, knowing not only that their time at GRCC is supported by the Promise Zone, but they can see beyond their GRCC associate's degree to the future at one of these two partners. So we're really excited about that. Finally, I'll note that the executive leadership team continues to communicate broadly across campus. We've had a number of town hall meetings every other month, continue to present information, but also hear questions and comments from our community there. We've had several drop-in sessions by the executive leadership team, where we're just hanging out in a room, and people can come and talk to us about whatever is on their mind, whatever they want to let us know. The most recent of these was held in the M-Tech Center to provide those folks an easy access to the executive leadership team. We send out periodic messages through email, both tea time coming from my office and ProVost updates from the Office of Dr. Sheila Jones, and that provides ways to convey some information and also to elicit a positive spirit across campus, and I think those are working well. And we prepare occasional topical communiques focused on a particular issue or particular matter at hand. There have been none of those in the last month or so, but we have that mechanism available and well rehearsed if we need to use that. So that's the summary of report that I will speak to. We have some folks who will come and present detailed information on a couple of topics in just a moment, but I'll pause here to take any questions if you have those.
Any questions? Comments? That's outstanding. Thank you.
And then I'd like to ask Lisa Dopke, who is the Director of Grants, to come to the podium to present the annual grant report.
Thank you. So I'm here to present our annual grant report. It reflects the department's accomplishments between January 1, 2024, and June 30, 2025. This year, the college was awarded 19 grants totaling just over 3.8 million. We submitted 16 proposals. So you'll notice that this is a much lower number of categories than we've had in previous years. This is largely due to the changes that have taken place at the federal level, such as fewer opportunities to apply for and delays in receiving awards. We've also heard from some of our philanthropic sponsors that the number of applications they're receiving is increasing pretty significantly, whereas they might have received 40 applications before. Now they're receiving 400, or even in some cases, more than that. Also, to put these numbers into context, I looked back over the last six years, from the 2018, 2019 year forward. Our average awards per year over that six-year period was 29 awards per year, so in comparison to the 19 that we're reporting this year. And our average proposal submitted was around 30, sometimes more, sometimes just a little less. So the college's grants department is transitioning our efforts to state and philanthropic sources. We're working closer with the GRCC Foundation to approach new sponsors and strengthen relationships with our current ones. We also haven't ruled out federal funding. We just think that in the current political climate, those grants, there's going to be fewer opportunities to apply for those. The next section of the report talks about our notable award for the year, which was our My Leap Reconnect Community Action Grant. That was a $1,250,000 grant that we received in partnership with the Kent ISD and Kent County. There's also several other collaborators and stakeholders. We, the group, prior to the submission of the application in November of 2024, there was a collaborative working group that established a countywide goal for Kent County of 80 by 30, which mirrors the state's 60 by 30 goal. The goal will be publicly announced sometime around November 1, and our next phase of the work will be contracting with a consultant to develop key milestones, database lines, and to establish work groups. The next section of the report is something we haven't done previously, but it's highlighting one of our grants that successfully wrapped up in December of 2024, and that was our six-year Gear Up Wyoming Project. This project served students in the four Wyoming high school districts from eighth grade through graduation. In total, the students received 92,401 hours of service. Families and educators also received services from the grant. So what this averages is about 91 services per student in each of those districts. The evaluation showed that the more services a student received, not surprisingly, also increased the chances that they would enroll in college immediately following their high school graduation. The services with the greatest impact were financial aid counseling and student coaching and advising, so relationships, which confirms something that I think we already know. Relationships matter when we serve students. The most notable outcomes were higher FAFSA completion rates and much higher post-secondary enrollments for that class. And then the last section of the report is the number and amount of our internal grant programs. The SSPD program supports staff, whereas the IIPD program supports faculty. Any questions?
Thank you, Lisa. Any questions or discussion?
Another question around, you know, you're talking about sort of just fewer opportunities because of what's happening with the feds. Curious around the size of opportunity, as well as you're hearing from philanthropic partners that there being, you know, there's more and more asks.
Yeah.
Are you seeing folk, like maybe there's still an opportunity, but like the amounts are shrinking, or?
Yes. I won't call out the foundation, but we've normally received a $1 million-plus grant over several years since about 2012, 2013, from a specific foundation to do workforce training initiatives. We've already met with that foundation. We're getting ready to submit our next application. It's going to be 800,000 over three years instead. So they just said with the number of asks that they're getting, they have to focus on other areas as well. So, yeah.
For clarity, not the steel case.
No, not the steel case.
I also had just a question around, as you are looking forward, so much money, so much state money actually comes from the feds, and are you anticipating further drop in the next year or two as that sort of trickles through the state budget?
Not necessarily. I think that the federal funds that we used to receive for workforce training as the applicant will flow through the states and the Michigan Works Agencies. So GRCC might be a training partner in the grant rather than the applicant. So not necessarily.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Williams. Anything else?
Yeah, she mentioned FAFSA. I made this just for you. Last year was a very difficult year with the process. Has that been smoothed out? Is it much more, it's easier for students to get access to financial aid and filling out that process?
My understanding is that it's been much better this year, but there may be folks in our audience. Sheila, is that someone you can handle for us?
I think so. And Anne, you back now?
Okay, I did Anne's in the back.
In general, I would say it's better. Anne, we good? And I think the important thing, though, was getting that information about what the FAFSA is and all the, like, kind of hoops to get it complete in front of families and students earlier, is what the Gear Up Wyoming Grant success story really is, and how we're trying to bring that. Our Promise Zone, for instance, does a ton of financial aid workshops. They start about now and keep that momentum going. So it's really about the information better. So I hope that helps answer your question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Anything else? I have a quick question for Lisa. What is the length of the My Leap Community Reconnect Grant?
Three years.
Three years?
Yes, we are six months in, so we have about two and a half years left.
Thank you. And what would year two or three look like in that grant, to the extent you know?
I think, I think we're still figuring that out a little bit. Part of it was working with a consultant to perhaps form an LCAM, a Local College Access Network for Kent County, but I don't think they're there yet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Wonderful. Appreciate your report.
All right. And next, we'll move to a finance report with John Globocker, our Vice President for Finance and Administration.
Glad to be back with you again. Can't believe it's already a quarter of the way through the fiscal year. So we're reporting on financials from July 1 through September 30. So within your packet includes a number of funds and their financial highlights. And as we move through the fiscal year, we'll examine both revenues and expenses relative to the pacing of those. So if something is outpacing a budget or is a little bit slower, those will be highlighted for you in the funds that we bring forward in the packet each month, or the general operating designated. operating designated, building in site, debt retirement, and auxiliary. So I'll hold there for a moment and ask if you have any specific questions about those financial highlights relative to revenues, expenses, and is this information, as we're sharing, presented in a way that's helpful to you?
Questions and comments? I have a question for you with regard to, there's a line item for miscellaneous expenditures. I think, I want to see in the printing office. I printed it for myself and now I'm, I find myself paging through. I'm going to find it. Unless you find it first. And I just, my, my question is just straightforward. What, what those expenses were for?
Are you referring to the $1,244? Or which?
I'm going to find it and ask you about it offline. We won't take any more time from folks here. Just a quick follow-up on that.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, comments?
Okay. So, thank you. As we move forward to the next slide, so just on the heels of an approved state budget. So I thought it would be good for us to reflect on how important state appropriations are to GRCC. As you can see, 23% of our general operating budget comes from the state. And the budget allocation or line items are presented to you on the right. So state aid, which is $31,225,000 for this fiscal year. Moving to the next slide, as we break that down, that $31 million is broken down in several different slices. What we do know now is around the operating appropriation. So the very top line, that 21.8 million budget, we are going to receive a little over 22 million for operations this year. So a slight increase of almost 200,000. And then we're, the other line items to be announced as we make our way through, we're really, you know, just right off the, the state budget approval. But I would like to share with you a little bit more of that dissection of that 22 million on the next slide. And it's a little bit of a nod to the local strategic value that we talked about last, last meeting. So you can see our base appropriation. This is the state's formula. Then they add in one-time funding, of which that's sliced in a variety of ways, including that 5% for local strategic value. And so that just gives you a feel for how the state layers our total appropriation for operations. And then there's the Indian tuition waiver. That's a pass-through to support those tuition waivers. So then in sum, that 22 million now supports our operations in this fiscal year. And we'll continue to keep you apprised as those other line items for the state become more transparent and not as opaque. But I did want to give you that information just so you could highlight the importance of the state appropriations relative to our overall budget and then begin to slice that down so we have a better understanding of, of the overall appropriation. So I will hold there if you have any questions relative to that information.
Can I ask you to go back to the slide immediately prior? Actually, maybe it's the one prior to this one. Thank you. Okay. So our three-legged stool here, state aid, property tax, tuition. Right now, state aid is less than property tax and tuition. Okay. Does that, do you find that that varies through the course of different budget cycles, different years? Those three main funding sources?
That's a great question. Before me, I don't have that, that history, but traditionally, those three legs are the most significant share. But as far as how they may move from fiscal year to fiscal year, be happy to bring that information back so that I'll have it more accurately for you.
Thank you. Be great.
Kind of taking along with what Kathleen asked, or Trustee Brian has been asked. We talked about the federal aid coming through, state aid. How about of that 23%, could you speculate about how much of that would be passed through federal?
So for the state appropriations, that should all be state funds that are coming directly to us.
Thank you, Trustee Perkins. Any other questions? Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Faculty Association, none at this time. Foundation Board. Erin Van Egmond. Do you have to call her? Erin Van Egmond, our Vice President of College Advancement and Executive Director of the GRCC Foundation.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And I do have a PowerPoint today, so while that's getting all set. Thank you, class. Perfect. So good afternoon. Today, I'm pleased to provide you with a few updates from our foundation team on the work we've been doing in the last couple of months. First, I wanted to provide you with some financial highlights. The foundation saw, if you can go to the next screen, thank you. The foundation saw significant growth in net assets, increasing by just over $4 million in the last year. What I've shared here is that total net assets grow, grew from 39 million in 2024 to 43 million in 2025. I've also shared how these numbers are broken down. So in blue, you'll see the assets without donor restrictions, which increased from 10 million in 2024 to 11 million in 2025. And then in the yellow, you'll see the assets with donor restrictions grew from 29 million in 2024 to 32 million in 2025. So again, that $4 million growth in the portfolio, which we were obviously happy about. I will also share, and you heard a little bit about this earlier, but that we completed our foundation annual audit conducted by Plant Moran. We received a clean, unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of insurance. But I do want to thank Nat Lloyd and his team in Financial Services and Mary Reed in the foundation for their work each year on the audit, but also throughout the year because we always keep our mind on that clean, unmodified opinion. So the next slide, I want to share some scholarship impact for our students. Here you'll see the total scholarship dollars awarded over the last three years. So in 2023, 24, $1.3 million was awarded and then increased to $1.4 million in 24, 25. For this current school year, we've awarded to date $1.1 million. We will be making additional awards for the winter and summer semesters, so you will see that number increase throughout the next couple of semesters. We are on track, though, to award this, about the same amount of students and dollars for this year. So the next slide, this was the total dollars awarded to students, now this is the number of students we've awarded. The number of students awarded scholarships increased from 1,600 to about 1,700 between '23 and '25. And for the current school year, we have awarded 1,100 students to date. So year after year, we continue to increase the dollars and number of students we support, which we're very proud of. The next slide, I want to provide you with a couple of Foundation Board updates. We are happy to welcome Sandy Spielmaker, who is a new Director of the Foundation Board. Sandy is the COO of Gun Lake Tribe, and she's also a GRCC alumna. We are with this addition to Sandy. That brings our total number of Directors to 24, and we are excited to add Sandy's knowledge and expertise to the board. Next, on September 16th, we hosted our first annual Emeritus Director Dinner. The purpose of this dinner was to recognize and bring together this group of esteemed former directors. In addition, we welcomed newest Emeritus Directors, Dr. Jim Bizetta and David Batrou. We have had Emeritus Directors for several years, but it really was in name only. But with the help of Dr. Bizetta, we created a more intentional program where we honor the legacy of those who made a significant impact on the Foundation Board and to the college. But we're also ensuring the Emeritus Directors' continued connection to the Foundation and the college. Additionally, we wanted a way to give back to these individuals who gave so much by offering ongoing engagement opportunities like this dinner. So at this dinner, Dr. Trezenberg and I both gave updates on the college and foundation, and Dean Hake also gave a presentation on AI at GRCC, with providing the guests with more of an educational update from the college. So we look forward to continuing our relationship with these Emeritus Directors. So next, I want to recognize two individuals, and one is actually here tonight and is not thrilled about this attention, but I'm doing it anyway. So the recipients of this year's Armin Omidian Consecutive Giving Club Award are Michael and Cheryl DePrae and their own Vicky Genoia. You see, we are recognizing these generous and loyal donors for their 36 years of consecutive giving. Michael is a Board of, Board of Director and a proud GRCC alumnus, and of course, you know Vicky, our Executive Director of Operational Planning. We are grateful to both of them for their ongoing commitment to the college, foundation, and most importantly, our students. So while we're on this topic, I wanted to share some statistics of the club with you. So we currently have 309 current members and 49 of them are new in the past year. Club members supported 102 different funds, raising $372,000 last year. And the longest consecutive giving streak stands at an oppressive 46 years. This club is not about the amount of money contributed, it's about the consistent support year after year. Next, I'd like to share with you some work we've been doing around new employee engagement. So over the summer, Erin Mullenkamp, our Senior Development Director, restarted our efforts around connecting with new GRCC employees. From July 2024 to July 2025, out of the 87 new employees, 38 of them took us up on an offer for coffee and tour of the Custer Alumni House. And then since August, we have started an initiative of connecting with new employees on their first day and being part of the new employee orientation. This provides us a great opportunity to welcome new employees and share about the work the foundation does, how they can get involved, but also be an ambassador for the foundation and the scholarships we offer our students. So my last update for you is to share recognition we recently received from the National Council for Marketing and Public Relations. For the fifth year in a row, the foundation annual report received a gold award. What I love about this specific award is that it's a true collaboration between the foundation team and the marketing team, specifically Mary Reed, Lisa Kirchner, and Julie Blazak. And if I can digress just a little, I wanted to share with you a few other reward, awards the marketing and communications team received from NCMPR. So in total, the team received seven awards for the work they produced last year. Five of them were gold and two were silver. And then also, Kaylee Potgutter, our Social Media Coordinator, received the NCMPR Rising Star Award. I'm very proud of this talented team and want us to take a minute to recognize them. So that is my report today, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
There was one slide we talked about. We've given 1,000, I think 100 students scholarships up to date, year-to-date. Do you have any projections on how we finish up the year?
It'll be close to that 1,700, so about $1.4 million again.
Thank you.
So you expect, just as a follow-up to Trustee Bream's question, you expect that this year's to be on level where the prior two years? Great. Thank you.
You showed the graph where it was unrestricted and restricted dollars. Curious, in this, in this moment, and we heard sort of what's happening with donors or foundations and some other places around the political climate we're in and, and funding climate. Curious if there's any, if you've seen any shifts in people's willingness to do more, you know, sort of gen ops, general operating gifts, less restrictions, understanding that what the needs of the college might be, might shift, you know, over the next few years?
So that's a good question. We haven't gotten to the point where people are wanting to support more the operation discretionary side, but people are really starting to make their criteria not so restrictive. And that's what we're working with a number of donors on right now and setting up new scholarships too. So really trying to make those scholarships less restrictive. Yeah.
Thank you, Trustee Williams. Anything else? Thank you for this beautiful report. Thank you for being essential partners in this work. And thank you for being so intentional with not just alumni Foundation Board members, alumni director, emeritus, but then new employees to be ambassadors for the foundation and for our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have, I believe, is it the first-ever Campus Activities Board report to the board?
It could be.
Okay. By Lacey Hendry, please. The Campus Activity Board's President. Welcome. Welcome, Lacey.
Good afternoon, Interim President Trezenberg, members of the board and the GRCC community. My name is Lacey Hendry, and I'm the President of the Campus Activities Board. I'm majoring in General Health and Exercise Science. I'm a member of the Honors Program and of PTK. Last year, I served as the International Language Club Treasurer and volunteered with CAP. I'm hoping to transfer to GVSU and then continue on to med school. I moved here from California after high school. I didn't know anyone when I started here at GRCC. I was expecting to miss out on the typical college experience, but boy, was I wrong. Being a student on a commuter campus can be lonely. Many of us come to campus, go to class, and leave without ever feeling truly connected. I've heard it from my peers, again and again, I don't feel like I belong here, and that's not our mission at GRCC. This reality is a call to action. At CAP, we believe that community is not a luxury, it's a necessity. We work every day to create spaces where students feel a part of something bigger. Whether it's a pop-up event that sparks laughter between strangers or a celebration that honors our diverse identities, our goal is always the same, to strengthen the GRCC community. We're not just planning events, we're fostering connections among students. I've seen firsthand how a simple moment like a shared snack or dancing at homecoming can shift someone's entire experience of GRCC, and I've seen how joy can be a powerful solution to isolation. This year, at our homecoming events, which were bouquet-making and a dance, we saw over 300 people attend. This was an opportunity for students to make memories or even make new connections. My hope is that every student who steps onto this campus knows they matter, that they're not just passing through, but that they belong here and are proud to be a Raider. CAP is working on its goal by hosting free events across all campuses. We are continuing this mission with our murder mystery event where students will follow a story trying to solve a murder case, a skull painting event at Lake Shore Campus for Day of the Dead, and two events during finals week, which are bringing therapy dogs to campus, and a study event at Lake Shore. We will also be helping with promoting Student Life's Gratitude Dinner, where students will be able to get holiday meal and socialize with other students. I'm joined in this mission by my fellow CAP members, Carissa Hudson, our Vice President, who is in the process of being onboarded and is a Business Administration major, and Jasmine Soto, a liberal arts student who attends Lake Shore Campus and is our Communications Director, as well as our dedicated advisor, Andrew Sweeter. Thank you for supporting our work. Thank you for believing in the power of community and for helping us build a campus where no one has to feel alone.
Thank you so much, Lacey. Thank you very much. The work you're doing is so important. It's a necessity, fostering connections, and community is not a luxury, it's a necessity. The more that you spread that around the campus, the better, and take that into your next after GRCC as well. Any questions, comments?
Just curious, you listed a bunch of things that you all have been working on and that you've got up and coming. Is there one that you have felt the most excited about or that you, that really connected in a way that, you know, that made the, made the team excited?
I think my, my favorite is an event that already happened, which was our homecoming dance. I just feel like it, it's one of the best opportunities for people to really have fun and kind of is a good opportunity for people who didn't already know each other to meet and like make new connections and friends.
As a person that grew up for 15 years in California, I'm just curious, what part of California are you?
I'm from Sacramento.
Salinas, so only a few hours away.
I have a follow-up question about the dance. Was it on campus here?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was in the ATC Piazza.
Beautiful. Oh, beautiful. Yeah, great. Thank you. Anything else? Look forward to your, your further reports down the line. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time in our agenda, it's time for the Board Chair Report. I am sitting in for Dr. Lovelady Mitchell. And what I can report on is the Search Committee for the Presidential Search has been meeting. This is a good cross-section of leaders from across the campus, and we will continue to be meeting. The closure date for applications for our presidential position is October 22nd, which I believe is this Wednesday. And we are moving in the right direction and doing the work. That's it. You know what? That's not it. There's one more thing. We do want to thank Deborah Perkins for coming to and speaking at our September fifteenth board meeting. She spoke during public comment, and we were very fortunate to have her here. So we're also fortunate that she, she brought us a trustee, so to speak. So thank you for that. That's it. Community connections. No communications to the board at this time. Now is time for public comment. We're opening the meeting up. If there's anyone who would like to address the board regarding any matter, you may do so at this time. This is not restricted to items that were on our agenda for today. Please come to the podium, state your name. I will remind you that comments are limited to three minutes, and we are unable to respond to your comments today. Seeing none. Trustees, any final comments?
I had just a few people I wanted to celebrate, no particular order. Cam Buck did a fantastic job with Strategic Leadership Meeting last Friday, celebrating over a thousand students enrolled for the first time. So I'd like to celebrate that. It's a big deal. Whitney Marsh is one of the facilities directors here. Got to tour the new workout center. That was excellent. And finally, Bo Peters and Wesley Fox got me in a cop car and tossed me around a little bit. That was a lot of fun, so thank you for that.
You might want to hear more about that later. Thank you.
I was not under arrest.
I've spent my whole life not getting tossed around.
Thank you, Trustee Perkins. Anyone else?
I have one celebration. During our prize, there was a GRCC alum. His name is Luis Fernandez, who had an exhibit, if you will, outside of the Gram called La Voz de Mi Gente, The Voice of My People. And it was just a, a beautiful display. And so I just want to give a shout-out to, to just the GRCC alum and the incredible talent that they bring to not only West Michigan, but far beyond. And that was just a beautiful piece that I wanted to celebrate for a moment. Thank you.
I will just add on the art piece, unless you have. Thank you for the wonderful Art Prize reception, for hosting Art Prize artists. It was a joy to see the works that were here on campus, and I'm proud of our participation in Art Prize. Anyone else? Thank you very much, everyone. Meeting is adjourned.